Just a couple of reports for everyone here this evening, continuing our our summer reports that we've shared out. And so to begin with, we have our student services report and Dr. Fuamano is going to give that, so I'll turn it over to you.
Hello, good evening and thank you so much for having me. Going to share a little bit about student services and what we've been doing second semester. I know we were fortunate to share with you first semester information and just continue to be grateful for the opportunity to step in and wrap around kiddos in important ways. So, I'll wait for Dr. Martin. So, student services, support resources, and just a little bit of review and some plans on what we have coming up. So, just a couple of the strategies that we will cover through my presentation in line with our strategic action plan are, we will provide or promote and sustain a collaborative supportive culture of mutual respect that honors each person, and we will address the social and emotional needs of our school community. So, with that, I'm going to start with some of our mental health that we support by what I call the support squad, which is our counselors, social workers, and our licensed professional counselors. We have community partnerships with Burrell, Sam Rogers, and Drum Farm. Just so you can have some background about that, Burrell is an agency that comes into our buildings and works with students. Sam Rogers is an agency that we provide support to get to and maybe helps with some medications and things like that for some of our students who need some support. And then Drum Farm works a lot with our unaccompanied homeless youth as well as has a very strong program to support students and foster care. We've expanded our partnership with some of our community partners to go down to the elementary, which is now providing support to 110 new students through that expansion over the course of the second semester alone, but over the course of last school year. And one of the partnerships, so if you were in the community and a student was in a mental health crisis and they dial 988, which is the number for mental health support, it actually reports back to one of our community partners, and they are able to get a referral to support them not only in the community, but then come into school to check in with them, providing full wraparound support, and closing that network of which we may not always know what's going on outside of school. It allows them to know what's going on and then provide support in and out of school, which is a pretty powerful partnership to have. Just some supportive points of contact that we did in the spring of 2025, were some of our intervention social work and LPCs. So interventions alone, we had over 15,617 interventions, which are check-ins. It could be us meeting with students about college and career prep, could just be triaging because sometimes there's a lot of life happening outside of school. We want to make sure they're okay so that they can do the school thing. Or just parent calls checking in, or if it's parent calls studying for conferences, or really just any other supports that they might need for community resources and things like that. Also, our social workers with points of contact with groups for students. It could be psychoeducational or psychotherapeutic. The difference with that is it could be like friendship groups, it could be anger management, it could be anything like that. It just kind of depends on what the needs are. That's what they base the groups on. Could be resources within the community, and it could be crisis management. Like, for example, when we had our horrific experience in January where we had the house fires, that could be something that our social workers are stepping in, meeting with those families, connecting with community partners, and supporting the school long-term as students are navigating a traumatic time and families. Our LPCs had 936 supportive points of contact in the spring. This could again be individual case management or crisis management depending on the need of the student.
If I could stop for just a second, obviously a couple of years ago, we committed to the LPCs at the secondary level specifically. So you can kind of see these numbers and how necessary those supports were, as Danica likes to put it, when life happens. And it comes to our doorstep, we need to make sure that we're able to support our kids. And these are just a number of measures that we've taken over the last several years to do that. So, obviously, there's a need, 15,000, 1,400, and almost 1,000 in these different categories, so pretty important.
A hundred percent, and this is just second semester. And so that's just showing from January to May, the level of support that were necessary and needed. It's typically higher in the fall, just as a transition, but just so grateful for the continued backing and support of the different support squad members that are in there, just to continue to wrap and partner with communities, partners, and other staff, just as we're helping kids do this thing called life, so. Community connections impact, so as you know, Student Services has been given the opportunity to do some presentations at the community level over the past couple of years, from Fentanyl, from online support, from online safety was our last one. We were fortunate through partnership with the foundation to bring a national speaker last year. And she spoke to community members about how to support kids online and different things you can do at home to help guide safe interactions and boundaries. Within that, there's just some discussion that came up from some of our community members and partners about, are there more things we should be doing at the school level to help with that? And guide, just as they're getting more exposed to technology, or things we could be doing at home in that. In partnership with CNI, who had already had it happening at the elementary level and had been working to expand at the secondary level. There's going to be curriculum that is going into place that will help with the digital footprint, as well as just overall digital citizenship that's been in place, and you can carry hook gravy. But just expanding that, and Sadie Birdso, I should say as well. Just expanding that, just to have more intentional conversations at all levels about what that can look like, so that we can, we know that technology is a part of our world, we know that communicating on different devices is a part of our world, but how do we do that in a way that's safe? How do we do that in a way where we understand impact? And how do we do that in a way where we're understanding the importance of maintaining connection with people? Additional some wraparound supports, we continue to partner with different communities and resources to support our students who are experiencing homelessness. That can happen in several different ways. For example, going back to that January fire, that impacted quite a few families that had disruption of their home. It can be just life happening, it could be someone losing a job, and we're able to really connect and partner with community partners. And thankfully, we also have a fantastic community as a whole that just rallies and supports people in such powerful ways. So we're continuing to work through that, also with our social workers and LPCs. Supportive structure lessons is something that we're looking to put in place this year that our LPCs have created, to support our students that might struggle with making regulated decisions in schools that makes them have to maybe spend some time elsewhere and then come back to us. Just providing opportunities for them to have tools in their toolbox, because we can't ask a kid to do something different if we haven't provided them options on what that might be. So, it could be emotional regulation, could be conflict resolution. It's going to be done with a trusted adult, someone that they feel like they can go to, because in that, they're able to walk through that vulnerable conversation, but also have a person to turn back and talk to when they might be having a time where they're struggling. So just giving that long-term checkpoint to say, we see you, we value you, we're glad you're here, and we're here to help. Babe intervention exploration, just knowing that that continues to be kind of an epidemic at a youth's age, and just how can we continue to find opportunities to maybe educate them on some health standards, on what that might look like, and decisions you can make, and long-term impact of health. So we're exploring some of that, just to maybe wrap around and partner with students in that regard. And then continuing to extend our partnership with agencies and other districts with supporting kiddos with foster cares, just so we can maintain some form of consistency for them, as they might have a lot of life happening that makes their housing inconsistent or their support system inconsistent. We want to make sure we're doing the best to keep school consistent and the support system we have here consistent. So we have a lot of partnerships with neighboring districts where we have meetings and conversations. That's been more and more as we're building kind of this big community of wraparound support in the KC Metro, which has been really incredible to do, and I'm grateful to be a part of, and glad that we're able to be a part of that. For our staff, last year, we did some professional development support. That was all guided by student voice about different things that they felt like they wanted students to hear about. We talked about that first semester, and it was understanding the power of opportunities. Second semester, it was understanding the power of our words, and that was presentations that Damon, myself, and Jackie did for staff, just so that they could have the opportunity to be fed and just take it all in and get some additional support. This year, we're doing a menu to say, have conversations with your leadership teams, with your staff. What do you guys need? What, how can we help you? How can we fill in gaps that maybe you're wanting more help in? So these are some different opportunities to provide professional development. We're asking for them to choose one for first semester and second semester. We're going to provide it for them yet again. Trauma-informed, understanding poverty, awareness of homelessness, supporting students in foster care, relationship building, and disrupting your algorithm are the topics we're looking at. Just to again provide opportunities for staff to continue and grow in areas that we've heard thematically from them, they'd like more information on.
What is disrupting your algorithm?
I wondered if you would ask. So disrupting your algorithm is just having conversations about how you do daily life. And do you do things in patterns, or do you do things that maybe you have to be conscious to disrupt your pattern? Could be simple as how you get to work, it could be the restaurant you go to, it could be your daily schedule. But are you finding ways to find new things to see, new people to meet? And how, you have to be intentional with that in today's society, with social media, and with relationships and things like that, just staying curious.
Appreciate the menu option this year because obviously there's a lot of similarities across our system, but there are buildings with very unique challenges that they need additional supports on. So giving them an option to say, hey, we need to learn more about this or that, I think is really beneficial to that specific school community, so that's a good approach.
Thank you.
Question, on any given day, what's our student homeless population size-wise?
I couldn't necessarily give you any given dates, it's kind of fluid. And what I mean by that is, it has to be, it's a renewable conversation. So thankfully, I built a lot of relationships, and so have our social workers, and our administrators, and our teachers. And so they reach out to their trusted people and have the conversations about, this is kind of where I am now. Because it's a very vulnerable and courageous conversation to call in, say, I'm going through this and I need help. And so they call the person that they feel comfortable having the conversation with, and then we kind of talk through, do they qualify by law, but if they don't, how can we still help? And so we start at a smaller number, but it grows over the course of the school year, because there's not a deadline for when we would qualify for someone for homelessness. It's whenever life happens, we're going to meet them where they're at and help them to get what they need. So I couldn't give you a specific number. I could tell you it's been overall fairly consistent with the number since I've been here and the pattern of growth, but I can tell you that there's forever growing need, and the needs are looking much different each year, depending on the population.
Question.
Any other questions for me? Thank you guys so much.
I just want to say thank you for all of this. I mean, this is, this is awesome to look at, and I love that the district has really prioritized the whole person of the student, because it's hard to come and learn math and English when you have, you have so much else going on in your plate. And I love that we have prioritized that, and we're helping be a safe place for all of our students. I, I'm really proud to be a part of this. Thank you for all you've done to pour into this and to help the team be educated to help support our kids too.
I'm just, thank you, grateful to be a part of a huge, amazing team. It definitely starts here, and then there's lots of boots on the ground with really big hearts, and they really, they do it every day, and I'm just grateful to be a part of it. So thank you guys. Thank you for your support.
In charge of that and the fact that, you know, we're a trauma-informed school district, that never changes. And obviously, we had a number of trainings over the last several years, those are trainings we continue to offer and make sure that our kids have the supports they need to be successful, so.
Got a question, real quick, real quick. I have actually had two people in the last maybe month and a half ask me about Valley View and how they would, you know, enroll their student in Valley View. And of course, I tell them to talk to their school counselor wherever they are. But would you mind just in a really short recap, just kind of going over how a student would, you know, find themselves looking for that avenue?
Absolutely.
And parents?
Absolutely. So, Valley View is our alternative school, our alternative high school. And Joe, just so, the way that I always explain Valley View is I'm like, it's, sometimes it's, traditional high school is too large, and that's just a nice smaller environment. Sometimes, my key phrase, there's a lot of life going on, it's hard to find that school-life balance, and that's a good place to find it. Or sometimes there's just credits that were just hard to get, and we got to get back on track to graduate. So there's lots of different reasons why students might want to choose that opportunity. And in pursuing that, that usually starts with counselor and admin conversations at Blue Springs or Blue Springs South. And then it kind of filters on from there, as far as what's going to be the best intervention plan, what steps have we taken in place. And I would encourage, if parents or students are interested, you're 100% correct, reach out to the counselor, start the conversation there. So then they can talk about, okay, are there any interventions that we're missing? Are there interventions there? Because there's certain things that also we have to take into account as far as what programs they might be enrolled in, that they might want to maintain, that might not be a good fit. There's just, you have to take a kind of situation-based, because we want to make sure we're thinking long-term to make sure the kid's getting to their ultimate goal. So that's why those counselor conversations are so important when we're looking at the, the, and now what after they graduate. We want to make sure that their current is matching that.
Thank you. And hopefully, parents that don't know, that was very helpful to them, so. Just get a little bit of information out there for them, so.
Absolutely. It's an amazing school, amazing program, and I was very grateful.
And we know you know it very well.
Yes, I was grateful, grateful for the opportunity to be a part of that program for a couple of years as well.
It was probably out of the scope of what you were talking about, but yet I thought, oh, I'll take the, since I had two people, two different families contact me, I thought, maybe I'll have you.
Absolutely. I will always, I will always share some, some flowers for Valley View.
Thank you, Danica, appreciate that. We do only have one more report tonight, but it's a little bit longer, I believe, because Steve is going to try to cover all things operations in our district, which is a huge task to do. But some really helpful and beneficial, I believe, information to share tonight. Obviously, looking forward to convocation tomorrow. We're going to be able to recognize some special individuals out of each of these departments in our district, award winners. In lieu of a classified convocation, they're joining us tomorrow, and we'll get to honor some of our folks, so excited to do that. But we'll have Steve take it over now and go through his report on the operations side.
Yeah, well, thank you, Dr. Jerome. Like I said, I do appreciate the opportunity to, to highlight four outstanding departments in the operations area. And so tonight, I thought I'd just give you a little bit of history here with the different departments and so forth. So Seth Shippey is our director of building and grounds, Rachel Barker is our coordinator of health services. Our director of transportation, transportation is Jeremy Morgan. And our director of food and nutrition is Brian Harris. I've had the opportunity to work directly with them for the past year, and it's an awesome group. They certainly put the school district as their priority and represent us in their departments very, very well. So I really enjoy working with that group. But before I go into the, kind of the more detailed information about the different operations teams, you probably know that it's kind of been a little busy here in the last several months with all of the bond projects we have going on. So, again, three elementary schools, the four middle schools, and of course, our Career Innovation Center, all going at this point. So I thought I would actually start by just kind of highlighting some of those bond projects, and then I'll bounce back to our operations team here in just a second. There it is. Okay, so first slide here is, I love the two pictures we have here on the left, because it really gives you an idea of what the front of that building is going to look like with the Career Innovation Center and highlighting Blue Springs School District. The bottom left-hand one has the cool brick that you can see now as you drive by on Vesper as well. And then the larger picture on the right-hand side is from the front going in, obviously. You see the steps to the stairwell to the back, the back glass window area as well. But as that individual's coming in on the left, that is the entrance into what will be the, the main office area and the principal office and so forth. And then on the right-hand side, we have an interactive, very large TV screen that will highlight some of the awesome things going on in that building or during that week in that building, as well as working with, highlighting how we'll highlight Dr. Seago and, you know, the impression that she had in creating what will be the Career Innovation Center. This is a video, you have probably seen this at the Education Foundation Breakfast back in the spring, but I went back and looked at this again, and I thought, this is, this is worth showing again. It really gives you a good highlight of what this is going to look like on the inside. So, just a quick note on that, I, I had the chance, I do want to mention this. I, I had the chance to tour the center with Dr. Seago about a month or so ago. And she is so excited about this. I got to kind of go through and show her where everything's going to be located. And, I mean, when, when you have the opportunity to do that, know that, how instrumental she was in putting these programs together, and then to have her face be a part of this, she was tickled pink by it. So, I'm glad we had the opportunity to do that with her.
Steve and I had a chance to walk through it the other day, and he's going to show some pictures here. You can really start to visualize us coming together, which is super exciting. And then we ran into a few of the workers on site the other day, and one was an electrician, and he was already asking about phase two. And, and he said, when does phase two get started? And we say, well, we have a few things to take care of before we get into phase two. But he said, his, his wife works in another school district, she says, I want to come see it when it's done, because I'm super excited about it. And then he got to talking more about, you know, you're probably going to need some teachers for those programs. And he said, absolutely. And he seemed to be interested in potentially doing that one day, so, in growing in, in those different fields. So, there's a lot of excitement and buzz, not only about this phase one, but also already in conversations about phase two. So I thought that was kind of cool.
Yeah, and he was an electrician, and, and to find electricians is really, really, really hard. So this was super exciting, and so we'll, we'll be paying him a visit, I'm sure, down the line, see if he can do that. I have to add too, that after our visit, Dr. Seago brought in about 100 dozens of donuts for the entire J.E. Dunn staff of about 100 people out there as well. So, true to Dr. Seago fashion, she took care of the people that are helping her out. Okay, so these pictures were actually taken, what is it, Dr. Jerome, a couple of weeks ago, when we had the opportunity to tour the building. It really is coming together. The top left is on the second floor, looking out east, obviously towards the current Career Innovation Center, and then you can see central office in the background. But that, off of that area is where potentially our phase two could go, right? It's going to start off of that area. On, on the other side, the right side, the front entry, you can see where the learning stairs are going in now. Bottom left is the gym. And then if you look up from that picture, that is a walkway above it. And then those three classrooms there are your health science classrooms, your physical therapy, occupational therapy with all the beds in that area. So those kids are going to be walking down a really cool pathway to get into their classrooms. And then, I, this picture didn't really give it justice, because I think Dr. Jerome and I stood there for quite a while dreaming about how awesome this is going to look. But this is actually looking back south towards what is the freshman soccer fields. So you can kind of see the trees, and you can kind of see the, the, the field in the background. But really, when you get up there, it's, it's pretty magnificent. Top left, very, very, very much needed, the professional development space that we'll have. So we were talking about this as well, you know, we can have our back-to-school administrators breakfast in there. We really don't have a great location for any of those things now, and that's going to be awesome. Retirement receptions, any type of event that we want to have is available, space there to do that. On the right-hand side is the second floor walkway. Again, the picture doesn't really give it great justice, but you can see in the background the throwing areas to the north, and then Blue Springs High School, the football field, and then the pool off to the left. But not the best picture, but I wanted to show you that that's going to be an incredible view from there as well. Bottom left is the front entry again, and then on the bottom right is a picture of the actual kitchen area. And then on the backside of those purple walls is where the restaurant will be, okay? And you can kind of see the stairs behind that purple wall, the stairs going up from the bottom floor of the restaurant to the top floor there. Okay, so this is a timeline. I, I asked J.E. Dunn to kind of put something together so that you guys had an idea. So when you're driving down Vesper now, you kind of know what to expect over the next several months. I thought this was really cool. In July, which, you know, we're already past, they've got the windows in now, right? And the metal panels are installed in the, over the entire building. And, and they're ahead of schedule, because we were in there two weeks ago, and they were already hanging drywall and framing things up. So they're, they've got a really good start on all of those. And again, in August, you're, you're going to start to see where the classroom space is actually going to happen. You're going to know where gaming and design is, you're going to know where the aviation classroom is going to be. Then into September, they continue to do the drywall install. And, and another big piece of this is really, by that time in September, you're, you're done with the outside of the building, and then they're really working inside. Mr. Swanson, you'll like this, this is where they're going to start working on those interior, the terrazzo, terrazzo floors, right? So you're going to start to see that, and when they start polishing those in October, it's going to look awesome as well. And then in November, kitchen equipment will begin to arrive. You're going to start to see the gym floors being installed, and then caseworking countertops start coming in. J.E. Dunn, we, we talked about this when we first started working on this project, if they could do like a time lapse from when we started to where we are now. And I'm going to play, just, it, it's a 10-minute video, but I'll show you about two or three minutes, because it's kind of cool to see where we started, and it goes through some of the weather we had last year up to now. So, Dr. Martin, if you would play that real quick. He'll bounce around a little bit, just to give you an idea. Dr. Martin, if you would play that real quick. He'll bounce around a little bit just to give you an idea. Here comes the bad weather. Think that was ice, right?
There you go.
Yeah, yeah.
Favorite time of year. It's cool to have all this documented, Steve.
Yeah, I, I really love this.
Time capsule piece.
That's pretty good, Brandon. Thanks. I think that's it with the current innovation center. Do you have any questions about that project where things are at right now? We're really in good shape. Things are going well.
Catching pretty well.
Yeah, yeah. Things are going great. So, um, I, the, the hard part on this is the pictures truly don't give it justice for how awesome of a facility is when you're out on that second floor overlooking, whether it's Blue Springs High School or their fields, it's, it's, it's a wow moment. So we're, we're, we're very fortunate to work for a district that has the support from the board to do things like this because this is going to be awesome for our kids.
Um, I was going to say when we, those of us that got, uh, opportunity, I think it was Ms. Cohen and, uh, Mr. Swanson and I got the opportunity to visit. It is that second floor overlook. It's very, I don't know, majestic feeling or some, there's just something about it. When you get up there, you're like, this is amazing. And those, the windows, they're, they are much bigger than you. It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't do it justice. So they, yeah, they did a great job. And I even asked about the, uh, elevators and whatnot because apparently that was a fun task trying to get hospital beds in the right spaces previously, but that will no longer be any type of issue. They have elevators that will fit hospital beds and more. So I was very excited for everyone.
But we do have one challenge. We have an autopsy table that needs to get moved to the second floor. So we're working through that dynamic right now.
So that'll be a, you know, problem solving all the time. But they had, they, so many things were thought of though, you know, and put in place and, um, so the building can grow with our students. And so, yeah.
Very fortunate. Any other questions on?
Yeah. So on the timeline, November, is, is it supposed to be done in November?
No, it will go through May.
Through May. Okay. So it'll be ready next fall.
For the fall of twenty six. We're hoping right now that our, our staff will be able to get in there in June, July and really get things set up. So furniture will come in and all those good things, but they are in great, great shape right now. So. All right. Oops. Let me bounce back. All right. We'll bounce to our middle school projects. Quick reminder, band room, new band room, uh, the multipurpose room. One of the three classrooms will be a theater classroom and then two additional classrooms. Those two additional classrooms are for your percussions and band and all those things. So they're in one side of the building as well. And, uh, with your support as well, I wanted to add that we, you know, at, at Brittany Hill, we're adding sixty parking spots, which is huge. Uh, Moreland Ridge, thirty parking spots. At Delta Woods, seventy three, which is really huge because I've lived that. It's, there's really nowhere to park unless you're out on Lakewood Way, which is never a good idea. And then, um, at Paul Kinder, we're adding an additional, uh, forty eight parking spots. Oops, I am really going the wrong way here. So here's some pictures of the middle schools real quick. Yeah. Paul Kinder Middle School on the top left hand side. That is on the backside, obviously of the building, walking in. Um, the room on the left is, is just one of the three classrooms. And then off to the other side, obviously is your multipurpose room. And then on the back, the other side of that would be your band room. One of the rooms is going to be used for, like I mentioned, the percussion room. And I love this. I, I took these pictures about a week or so ago, week and a half ago. And, uh, man, you walk out into these buildings and teachers are already in there. And they're, they're moving stuff and they're really not supposed to be, but they're moving their stuff in and they're super excited and, and they just can't thank the board for the support and they're just, they're ready to go.
They are over the moon.
Yeah.
Excited. I, I, I stood in that room on the bottom left, the band room at PKMS. And Nathan Will Hoyt is standing in the middle of the room, looking back this direction. He goes, this used to be the band room. And now, and then he turns around and he goes, now it's all of this. And he just was beside himself. Um, you know, orchestra has a dedicated room now, which is amazing. Uh, the percussion room, if, if you aren't familiar with the middle school situation, then prior years, they were in these tiny classrooms.
Oh, yeah.
That could not be the best for your hearing or, uh, learning next door. Uh, now they have their own dedicated percussion room and obviously the performing arts space in the bottom right. Those are spectacular.
Yeah, orchestra was one of those poor, almost stepchild programs where you kind of just moved them where you had an open space, right? Sometimes it was next to the math teacher or science teacher and that wasn't always really pleasant. So for them to, they're taking over the old band rooms. I call them old band rooms, but we went in and new carpet, paint, the whole nine yards. So they, there's, they look great too. Yeah. And then the bottom right is that multipurpose room with the seating down for you. And then, uh, just a couple more pictures, just so you have an idea of, um, what the multipurpose room would look like with the, the seating up. Another picture of the percussion room, orchestra room, which is the old band room. They've already moved all their stuff in. And then the bottom right one was at, uh, Delta Woods. I just laughed. This, this was, I'm like, she's in, she's moved in and we're, we're not going to be able to do any touch up in there at this point. So she is fired up, excited. Okay. So let's, any questions on the middle schools? Okay. So let's move into the elementary projects. Again, we're, we're finishing those up. Um, visited a couple of the schools today. There's still a lot of work going on in there, but we're really in good shape there as well. So William Yates reminder, we have four new classrooms. Um, and i- in addition to that, two special education classrooms as well as counseling offices. Um, at Franklin Smith, with Smith, they have the office space, the teacher workroom, lounge space, carpet and windows, counseling offices, a new art room and then, and a really nice exterior facelift to the building, new lettering. They were painting the logo back on the side of it today. The trim work is now a wood trim that I saw today again, and it looks great. They've done a nice job with that. And then at James Walker, the updated front entry as well, office space, teacher workroom, lounge space, conference room and counseling offices. So this is Dr. Jerome and I a couple of weeks ago in the new library at Franklin Smith. And they are ready to go. So, um, was over there today and the, the teacher, Amy Baker was already moving books in and getting things situated. So they will be spot on, but that is just an awesome space. On the bottom right hand corner, the projector will actually face that wall. So they can have learning lessons on the carpet there. But I can tell you, I think the highlight's going to be all those kids are going to want to run up to that learning stair area, right? It's, it's a pretty cool view from there. On the back left hand side is kind of a workroom area. Um, but Amy, the librarian there has been talking about how she'll do some multi, some video kinds of things, podcasting, all that good stuff. And then on the right side that you don't see is her office. Um, I'm not sure Franklin Smith or James Walker, for that matter, ever had their own dedicated really teacher workroom. So there they go, on, on top left hand side. Um, front office has windows now and when you walk in, I mean, there's just more space. It's brighter. It looks great. Um, so more space for the secretary, the receptionist and our SRO. Um, bottom left is a, is a, is a picture of where they're at with the principal's office. And then, um, on the bottom right, they have a conference room now. So you're not, if you have a parent meeting or an IEP meeting, any of those kinds of things. And traditionally in some of those buildings, you were doing those things in a classroom. When a teacher was on their playing time, you had to move them out. But now they have a dedicated conference room. So they're super excited about that. At James Walker, I had to do the side shot here. This is on the left, the old office when you came in. It's, you can kind of see the door there on the left hand side. So you had no room for even a chair. If somebody came in, they had to stand right up at the counter. There is no space in that room. And now you're going to get this on the right with this beautiful new area to greet, meet and greet. Windows again. And when you have a chance to go in there, the tile work on the back is just, it really, it, it pops a lot. It's really, really nice. So, a really nice new reception area for people to wait. Their teacher workroom was a little further ahead. So you can see where they're at with that. Um, the lounge is pretty cool too. It, it's going to be super nice. And again, they really didn't have a dedicated teacher lounge in the past. So, I, yeah, being over there today, I had two people stop and tell me how much they just simply appreciate that. So, and the principal office and a conference room as well. At William Yates, I'm going to start with the top right picture because when I pulled into William Yates last week, I think I sent, uh, Dr. Jerome a text. I'm like, you have to see the front of this building. It looks so much better now. Not better, but just looks awesome with the two blue ribbon, um, signs on that. Again, the picture doesn't give it justice, but it really added a lot of flair to it. It looks great. Um, again, the counseling office, I just had to chuckle because they weren't supposed to be in there. And guess what happens? They're, they're, they're excited. Uh, bottom left is a new playground that we put at the top side at William Yates and it is awesome. The one thing that, and I, I might mention this a little bit later as well. Um, all new playground equipment, but they're also putting it in some areas where, uh, kids can go out there and there'll be some shade as well for them. Um, and then, uh, bottom right hand side is just one of the classrooms, one of the four classrooms that they have, and they are big classrooms. Any questions on the elementary schools? Okay. Yeah.
I don't have a question, but again, I wanted to highlight that, um, I didn't get to go to all of them, but we went to, um, Yates was one of them. And I appreciated the collaboration, which I'm sure, um, in our district and, uh, Dr. Brown, maybe you can, you probably had a hand in it along with other people, but there were a lot of, um, thought to put in that was done as far as, um, some of the special education classrooms and them being, um, extremely sensitive to the needs of the students. I know there's, um, dimmers on the lights. Um, the restroom facilities are going to be, um, very usable for every kiddo that needs it. Um, they had sensory walls put in and, and just all kinds of things. So I just appreciate the thought that was put into that. So it can really fit all the kiddo's needs and get them to get the support that they need. And, and for the educators too, it makes their life easier because they don't have to afterthought kind of go, okay, how do I get this for this kiddo? Cause it's already, it's been thought about. And so that was just something that I thought was really wonderful.
One of the really nice things with that is Dr., uh, Brown allowed her teachers to be a part of some of those conversations that we had. And, and I remember them talking about the, the idea of having a sensory wall down the main hallway. And so that's going to look pretty awesome. And then they have some soft seating in that area for some of their children as well. So, it was, you know, it, it's great when you can get them involved and they have some ideas for you.
I was, I was appreciative of the way they managed to use the property and develop the playgrounds where they needed them. And, you know, because that's a, not the flattest of territory out there. And the way they blended in, the new addition with the existing building, making it look like it was always been that way. I thought they did a marvelous job at that. And then like, like April said, the, the special ed classrooms just blew me away. What all they had to work with in there that they didn't have previously.
Good flow to it.
Yeah, yeah, it really is. Straight down the hall kind of thing. Yep. Yeah, it looks great.
Pickball field's intact.
Jason appreciated that.
Um, okay. I do want to mention some other things real quick. Um, these are things that because at, you know, as a district who've been really good stewards, I think with our bond project monies, we've had some opportunities to do some other things. I told you this was been a busy year, guys. This has been. So, um, we finished up the turf, band field and the tower at Blue Springs South. So you have a picture of that up at the top hand, left hand side. Um, we're going to do some things with the Blue Springs High School tennis courts as well. So we're super excited about that. If you've ever been out there, you know that there's huge cracks and all of that as well. But fence went up last week. I met over there on Friday and they were beginning the process of, um, taking down the interior fence around the courts. So they're going to redo that. Um, they're going to have purple courts. They match Blue Springs High School. This is a partnership with, uh, with Parks and Rec as well. So they've been super good about getting our feedback on what we would like those tennis courts to look like. So, um, you could be playing on them by the end of November, hopefully. Okay?
Are we, can I ask?
No pick, no pickleball markings.
Thank you. Thank you so much. The only reason it's the students' competition courts. That's why I keep.
And there's a nice pickleball court right next to.
Reinforcing that because it's so hard to compete on a tennis court with pickleball lines on it. And our students are great tennis players. Thank you so much. I so appreciate it.
So we've had issues with fiber, obviously in the past where you have a cut, it causes turmoil throughout the entire district. So now we were able to connect the fiber all the way around with that loop. So if it happens, it bounces back the other way. So you're not going to have the entire district down at this point. So that was a, a big project that we were able to do. Um, this fall, we'll start the process of putting in electronic signage at all of our four middle schools. Um, but we also included Chapel Lakes and Voice Spears, Sunny Point. Um, obviously James Walker is part of the bond, but Cordell Mason because they were, when we went to get, um, to talk to the city, we went ahead and just took care of all of that at the same time. So you don't have to go back and get additional permits in the future if we did it. So, um, this fall, we'll be taking care of some of those buildings with the electronic signage. Um, the high school stor- uh, storage sheds that I'm talking about are on the main football fields at both of the high schools. If you look at them closely, it's time for them to have a touch up cleanup. So we're going to do that. Plus we're adding an additional shed down by the new band field, practice field as well, so that they don't have to haul things back and forth as much. Um, this came up out of the activities meeting, uh, that Mr. Wolf had with the A Ds and it's a great idea and we're going to be able to do this. The idea of being able to stream any of our activities in the multipurpose room in the middle schools. So if grandma and grandpa or brother or sister, somebody can't, that can't get there for that event, they'll be able to stream that now. So we have the capability to do that.
Some game changer?
That is a game changer.
Will it be game changer?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah. And then, um, and then we have, uh, communication upgrades at, uh, Voice Spears. We were having issues with phones and found out that there are certain times when they were trying to communicate with the outside world when you need to talk to ambulance, police, nine one one, those kinds of things. And there's some struggles there. So we're taking care of that. Um, we're adding LED lighting at Blue Springs High School football field, Blue Springs South football field, as well as the freshman center soccer fields over here. Um, and then, um, next summer will be replacing the indoor bleachers at both of our high schools as well. So got a lot of projects going on there and, and have done a lot. So any questions on those things? All right. So let, I told you I'd circle back around and talk a little bit about each department. Um, the biggest highlight I think we can share with our building and grounds department right now is what you see up there on the top right hand side. They went and we were able to celebrate them last spring. Um, we, Dr. Jerome and I know Mr. Fry was out there with us. We got to celebrate them for having a thousand dollar, a thousand dollar, thousand dollar, a thousand days without a lost time accident. And the previous rec, when you see that was thirty three days. So that's four years, guys. I mean, that's impressive. So.
Yeah, I assure you they are working.
Yeah.
That's quite a streak.
So Dr. Jerome, the very bottom bullet there shows that they did five thousand, five hundred and twenty two school dudes in two thousand twenty four, twenty five.
That's impressive.
And that, that, that doesn't even include like the old Steve Cook that were principals where we didn't even know how to operate school dudes. So I just called them and told them, you need to get somebody out here to help me out, right? So.
School dudes are work orders. So, uh, sinks broken in the hallway over at Delta Woods and they put a school dude in, those kinds of things.
Yeah. Um, yeah, okay, so then again, back just to this, twenty-six buildings that they service and twenty-four full-time staff members. And then they also, um, have nine summer helpers that they, the summer helpers are pretty cool, they're, they're all former tea, are former, they're all teachers. So they've been coming back for years and, and they know the routines, but they stay busy. And then I just, some of the trades that we do have specifics, the HVAC person, a locksmith person, a grounds person, appliance repair plumber and welder. Those are all some of the trades that those guys are, are part of. Um, again, uh, just quickly, I know, um, with Building and Grounds, some of the highlights when we think about what they did in two, uh, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, a lot of HVAC, you've seen the Blue Springs South, Voice Spears and Chapel Lakes, we've been on roughs, working at James Lewis, Sunny Point, Paul Kinder, Cordell Mason, John Allen, Delta Woods and Paul Kinder. Um, but I wanted to mention the W Y E, uh, playground as well, that was a, a big job for them as well. Um, even though we have project, uh, you know, companies, New Kirk and J E Dunn, working on these bond projects, there is a lot that goes on with our Building and Grounds Department to help support what they're doing onsite as well. So that keeps them super, super busy as well. Um, and then, um, one of the other things that we noticed over the last couple of years, the outside of our middle schools, they have the brick, but then there's a lighter brick, kind of a trim that goes around the building, and it just got grimy and dirty. And it just did not have a good look to it, so I, I remember mentioning that to, to Seth at one point, and Seth being Seth, said he already had somebody, a plan for that, and had a company, so that company came out, um, this summer. They did a huge power wash with these great chemicals and just cleaned it all up, and at the same time, they did some work on all the concrete and the, the, the brick work on the outside of those buildings as well.
So much better.
Night and day difference, yeah, night and day difference. Um, and then, of course, everything from asphalt paint, epoxy and carpet throughout the district, so. Um, okay, so I was putting this PowerPoint together and, uh, um, Scott, our, uh, maintenance worker at Central Office, wanted to know why he wasn't a part of it, so there's Scott. So, yeah, there you go, right? Uh, he's great. Anyway, so, uh, kinda talking about what we look at for Building and Grounds as we move forward into twenty-five, twenty-six, one of the things we want to do, um, is, is talk about giving our building principals a survey, talking about your work orders, your school dudes. Um, for us, it's super important that if you put a school dude in, that we're not taking a week or two weeks to get something done. And if, and if we are, we need to be communicating that to the principal so that they don't have to circle back around it. So, we'll do that in the fall, and I'd be happy to share that information with you as we do that. Um, we have the elementary playgrounds, we'll continue to upgrade those. One of the things I think Dr. Jerome would tell you is that when he goes out to the buildings, there's, there's mention of wanting more shade in our elementary playgrounds. So we'll, we'll be looking at doing some things there. Um, roof replacements will continue to be a big thing, completion of all of our bond projects. Uh, and then we're gonna add some additional emergency lighting on the outside and the inside of our buildings at the elementary sites. Uh, one of the things we started to talk about too is something beyond just the beginning of the school year, trainings for our custodians. We wanna kinda start doing some more ongoing things throughout the year, uh, so, so we're gonna work on that. What's that?
We're gonna have PD for our.
We're having PD for our cust- and they love it, they do enjoy it, I think they actually get a lot, a lot out of, we have different vendors that will come in and, and talk to them and so forth. Um, I'm not sure this fits perfectly in the spot, but one of the things I did wanna just give you a quick update on is, uh, seeing me at Cordell Mason. Okay, Cordell Mason Elementary has a development going on behind it on the south side called Hudson's Estates. They've reached out and they are interested in being a great partner to us in regard to, uh, giving back to the district the opportunity to create a road that would actually go through their, um, their development. Yeah, so we're kinda, we're in that process right now. So if you've ever been there, first day of school, summer school, the number of cars, you gotta loop, you go in and you loop out, we have to have an officer, you know, out there directing traffic and all those things. So we're in that process of working with them to, to get that accomplished. So, super, super appreciative of, of the developers, they reached out to us and said they were willing to have this conversation. So, we'll see where that goes.
I'm very excited about that, my, uh, my neighborhood people may or may not have been asking and that, because you can walk to the edge of our neighborhood and see, and I may or may not have had a few people contact and ask, are we gonna be able to eventually drive through it?
Maybe.
I said, maybe, but I'm not promising anything, but that's very, very exciting, I'm sure, yeah, it took probably a lot of, uh, conversations and work on.
And a lot more conversations, and we're talking with the city now, and it, it's, it's down the line, but that, it is a process for sure.
But that's exciting, yay.
But anyway, I wanted to bring that to your attention as well. All right, so, um, kind of a, a solar power update as well. Um, we actually, I'm gonna bounce, we, we have two solar programs that, uh, companies that we work with, MC Power and Artisan, okay? So with MC Power, we have the board, uh, the board building, Brittany Hill, Blue Springs South, Cordell Mason, Franklin Smith, James Walker, Liggett Trail Transportation, Valley View, William Bryant and Thomas Holtiken, okay? From here, you can see in two thousand nineteen, that number is how much we saved. Two thousand twenty, how much we saved and so forth. I, I ran the numbers all the way to two thousand twenty-five from January to June, okay? So, this was a loan to, to do this, this was a loan that we took out in two thousand and eighteen for one million nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, okay? To date, when you add two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-five, and then I just doubled the fifty-five thousand, by the way, to make it a full year. Um, our savings to date is about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and one dollars, okay? So then I put another line in there, just kinda averaging what we think we can do over the next whatever number of years, what we've had from nineteen to twenty-five. That's an average of, if I did my math correct, a hundred and fifteen thousand, one thirty-nine. So, the big point down below that, if I got this right, is we have a break-even point where this actually pays off. That break, uh, that break-even number is one point two one four two nine nine, so we've got a long ways to go, right? And again, if the math is correct on that, if, if we do the average correctly, that's gonna be about another ten years before that. We, we've taken care of that loan for one point nine six five. Does that make sense? The life expectancy of these is about twenty-five years. And you start to see, not, there's not a lot of maintenance with them, it's more about repair. And we actually had something happen on the top of this one, and it was about three thousand dollars to repair that, and then you have, for the part. And then you also have to pay for the, the actual manpower, the service with it as well. So then, um, our other solar company is Artisan, and you see the schools there, Blue Springs High School, Delta, Brittany Hill, John Allen and, and Chapel Lake. So I did the same thing there, and we're, uh, that was part of the two thousand and eighteen bond. I'm assuming, I didn't have information on two thousand and nineteen, so I'm assuming that that was the year that we started to put it in. Um, and again, I did the same numbers on there, and so you're looking at about eight or nine years before we, we hit that break-even point there. Okay, let's bounce over to transportation, so I asked Jeremy to send me a picture. Jeremy obviously was celebrating Christmas in July. That's what he sent me, but, uh, anyway, the most important part with the transpa- transportation department is on the left-hand side, when you talk about this award that they received for thirty-five years in a row, uh, ninety percent or higher on those two, the, the, uh, the reviews that they have with the transportation department. Um, to give you a little bit of an indicator, I don't think, the ne- there are two other schools that were at thirty years with a ninety percent or better, and then it drops down to like one school at twenty-five years and two more schools at twenty years. It, it's, it's, that is quite the award, and I mean, and they go in and they spend two days checking brakes, checking video systems, wiper blade, you name it, they're doing all of those things, and it takes a long time to get through that process. So, we certainly wanna celebrate what that team has done. So, they have, uh, just some other quick updates, I thought these are cool numbers, two hundred and ten total staff. Um, out of that, a hundred and fifty-two are drivers. At any one given time, they have a hundred and ten buses on the road, um, during their three-tier routes and two hundred and thirty-nine routes every single day. And that's, uh, routes and miles is one point four three three, two hundred and twenty-seven miles. And when you go to field trips, they have two thousand ninety-eight field trips a year, and you got the total number of miles they put on that as well. And then, of course, unleaded gas, what we spend in a year in the diesel number as well. Real quickly, I, I wanna just throw this information out to you as well. Um, this is our, uh, bus fleet information, we have a hundred and fifty-nine total buses right now. Out of those hundred and fifty-nine total buses, we have, uh, fifty gas diesel buses that don't have any air conditioning. But we also have these C and G buses, and, um, we have twenty-one of those. And just a little bit of history there, C and G buses are not ideal, okay? They, they are super expensive, they break down all the time, and we can't find parts for them. So part of our process will be, um, through the next, you know, I'm, I'm working with Mr. Sampson and Jeremy to kinda come up with that game plan for what we can do to remove those twenty-one C and G buses from our fleet. Um, they do come up, those buses come up for another, um, they come up in two thousand twenty-nine for their inspections. And that will be a challenge at that point to get them through inspection, so we're looking at that. But then also having conversations about what can we do to, um, you know, reduce our number of air-conditioned buses, our, the, our buses that don't have air-condition as well. Real quickly, we, one of the highlights I definitely wanna focus on is the Stop Finder. If you got into parent po- portal and you're enrolling your kids, this is an app you can put on your phone now. We, we soft piloted this last year, now we've put it out there, but it is awesome. It will tell you where, what bus number it is, what time the bus picks you up, if the bus gets stopped on a railroad track or something, you can see in real time where it's at. Transition days, we're doing those this week, I know that Mrs. Aggett, you were very involved with the, the transition days and the importance of having our fifth graders prior to school starting, the opportunity to do those routes. Um, same thing with our eighth graders to ninth graders. And then, um, uh, down at the bottom, uh, one of the new things we wanna do this year as well is continue with the staff trainings with wellness, trauma, but, um, management strategies and so forth. And then, that, for next, uh, for this coming year, um, one of the things I'll just quickly highlight as well is, uh, Jeremy put together a, a startup guide. It's kind of a who to call for anything, if you have a, a question about transportation, uh, from who to call, special education quest, questions, trip requests, safety and discipline, all those things, so that was something new that we've gotten really good feedback on as well. All right, I'm gonna bounce to nutrition and services real quick, so there's your team of nutrition services, Brian Harris is on the left, he's your director, and that's his team. Um, just some quick numbers for you here, five hundred and five, seven hundred and seventy-one breakfasts in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. He gives you an average how many breakfasts we served, shows you how many lunches we had in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four as well. And then we bounce up to two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, and you can see that we are feeding a lot of kids, right? We still are at that twenty-nine percent free and reduced. Um, I talked to Brian today, I didn't change this, cause I wanted to make sure I, I shared this with you. Our student meal debt was at a little over three hundred and ten thousand dollars at the end of the school year. We're down to about two hundred and sixty thousand right now, but that's because of the conversations. You know, I know Denique is very involved with it, but Brian, their counselors, administrators with families as they come back in to enroll. What can we do to help, what can we do to assist you, can we come up with some sort of plan to help with that? Um, and then, um, basic, for the highlights for the twenty-four, twenty-five, we're gonna continue, we have a local food grant where Brian is able to get fresh fruits and vegetables, uh, from farmers within a ninety-mile radius of Blue Springs, so our kids are receiving that. The food truck is super busy, we're super excited when, um, the C I C opens that we can partner with our hospitality and our restaurant to do even more with that. I learned recently as well that the food truck was out this summer, um, feeding, uh, students in need as well at several of our different locations, and they partnered with, uh, the local, um, churches and so forth to do that. That's a recruiting and retain, uh, retention video that we put together last year, and we can show that at a different time. Um, and then again, this year for nutrition service schools, staff trainings, food choice and, and coming up with a good stu- uh, student debt plan. Last thing I'll mention on nutrition services with staff trainings, we are actually, all of the new staff in nutrition services are, um, going to Blue Springs High School on Thursday, and they're gonna do a mock beginning of the year training, and they'll be feeding our transportation department, the administrative teams, count all of those folks, so they kinda have an idea what this looks like before they actually are put into a school where they're serving, so that's a really, really cool idea. Um, okay, and then finally, with our health services update, we now have twenty-three, um, total registered nurses. And then you can see the rest of that staff and where everyone is housed. This is a cool slide, it shows you that we had over a hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight student contacts this year in our health departments, uh, in our, in our clinics, and you can see from there the different needs of the kids and what they were seen for. Um, a very interesting slide, I asked Rachel Barker, um, it'd be really cool at some point to see if, if we could come up with the numbers of where we are now with some of the, the issues that kids have, some of the concerns, health issues, compared to where we were even three years, four years, ten years ago kinda thing. And then, um, just real quickly again, so Rachel is really good at doing the professional development. She's had the, this, her whole team go down to Children's Mercy for trainings. Um, on the AMI Day, she's done, up at the top, you can see the food allergy stuff, the concussion protocols, different things that the kids have as well. Um, and then just real quickly, um, we did a spring vaccine clinic, um, last year to help with some of this. And then we just had one this past week as well at Blue Springs High School, and we had fifty-five families take advantage of getting their, their immunizations updated at that point, so. Um, and then looking forward to this year, you, you're very aware of what we're doing with the Project Adam things, and we're, we have the elementary schools we need to continue with. And then, up at the top there, the Stop the Bleed Training, that's our next step in some of the trainings we'll do with the buildings. And I certainly wanted to include Building and Grounds Food Service, obviously, and, and transportation training as well. So, and then Dr. Jerome mentioned, the last slide there is, um, we'll have a, an additional, uh, kind of our own little complication for, um, our four departments on Friday as well, we'll have lunch for them, and that's kinda their, their meeting as well. We'll get out and greet them and tell them how much we appreciate them, because they are awesome and they do a great job, so. Sorry, I kinda rushed through those last slides.
Yeah, we'll make sure to share all that, uh, information with the, uh, with the board, obviously, so you can look at that later. Uh, we include that in the Friday report, so you have that data, uh, but thanks for putting that together. Good comprehensive look at all departments, so with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
All right, well, thank you for all that, and I'll just echo, Health Services does a fantastic job with. Rachel has done, or how she's taken that department and moved that leaps and bounds is, is fabulous, so. So, committee updates, do we have any, I'll start down here to my right.
Uh, yes, we have the, uh, state of schools address, um, the day after the first day of school, which is, uh, a lot we gotta cram in on that first day, Dr. Jerome. No, um, so that's gonna be happening for the Independence Chamber of Commerce, and of course, we have our Chamber Week, um, with all that, so make sure you, um, get with Karen if you plan on attending, but I'm very excited for state of schools, it's gonna be a great time.
Uh, the Chamber Legislative Task Force met this last Friday, and their presenter was from, uh, downtown Blue Springs Alive. And so they've, they were talking about all the things that they're doing in downtown, and it just amazed me. So, you need to go to their website, which is downtown Blue Springs, the Alive is not in the website name, it's downtown Blue Springs, and see all of the events, they have continuing events like car shows each month type things, you know, something like that. To bring people into downtown and working with the merchants and stuff that are there, so. Check that website out and see what all is going on in downtown Blue Springs.
Okay. And finally, any committee, okay, uh, how about board member updates, we'll start back in reverse, Nick, any updates? And finally, any committee, okay, uh how about board member updates, we'll start back in reverse, Nick, any updates?
Um just real quickly, um appreciating the partnerships that we have in the community. Um on Saturday, uh Community Service League held an event compassion, uh fashion for compassion. And so April, and Rebecca and I had the opportunity to hit the runway and participate for this awesome fundraiser um which was raising money for back-to-school supplies and shoes and for the Christmas store that they um hold in December to help our families um in need, and so just grateful to our partners in the community.
All right, any updates? Updates?
Just busy, you know, getting my kids ready to go, my oldest, my twins will be getting ready for high school, so that's a little bit of a uh, you know, a pill to swallow for my mom heart because, you know, I know high school goes like that. And um so that's been though exciting to, to see and, and all of that, so just, you know, getting ready to go back to school.
Yeah, real quick, I'll be real quick, we had MSBA board meeting, which was the first meeting of the new year because when Summer Summit happens, that's the end of MSBA's year, fiscal year. And so a new board comes on and there's training and they go over all the different departments for MSBA, whether it be advocacy, legal, policy, events, membership and leadership development. There was a recap on Summer Summit and how that went, and from the evaluations for the last couple of years, Summer Summit is going to return to the lake next year, so we will be at the Lake of the Ozarks and um back there. And it seems like that's, most people felt like that's the center of the state and it's easier for everybody to get there instead of some of the other locations, so we're back at the lake. And then the uh, we had a nice recap on the legislative session and um coming up with the regional meetings and uh opportunities for Zoom meetings where they're going to update how school districts can uh navigate the um cellphone policy and the changes that the legislature has made and how that impacts us. Cellphone policy and students who might be coming from homeschool and a part of activities, how that's navigated because there's so many questions on how that is going to logistically be done. And so um opportunities there for you guys to get on Zoom and uh learn from those. And, and if you look at your MSBA news that you get every day, that you should get every day, there should be um notices and advertisement about this is going, this Zoom meeting is this day, please join us, and it doesn't cost us because we're a member of MSBA. So um and then the last thing is um the Leadership Development Committee has changed qualifications for additional certification for us as board members. You uh, we have our op- obviously the basic, you know, certification, but you have an opportunity to achieve advanced masters or govern, or uh distinguished, and the, the qualifications have changed. So if you're interested in pursuing more certification, which is an awesome thing for a board member to do, um you can do that. And then um that also has changed the governance award, which is what we as a board can work together to achieve and um achieve that award, you know, for our board. And so those qualifications have changed as well, so all of that was gone over and new board members that have come on to MSBA that might not understand all the things that MSBA provides school districts, um they were educated and uh a professional development, and so it was a great, it was a great two-day meeting and so, thought I'd give you that little recap, so.
I wanted to ask, can we work towards the uh governance award?
I would, that would be great, yes, absolutely.
I went ahead and, and got, what is the, what is the first or the next one?
The advanced.
Thank you, and I know you had talked about that there had to be one, more than two people.
One other person other than someone who has certification, so.
So that could be something though that, as a board.
It, it, a lot of it depends on how many come to region, region forum meetings, how many go to Summer Summit, how many might, you know, how many board members might um attend annual conference, and we're all good about that, so. It will be very, I think, you know, and in, in the past, it's been very difficult to achieve a master's certification or a distinguished certification because you had to be a part of different boards and that might not be an opportunity to, for more, you know, board members to, you know, put that additional board service ship, service on their um, you know, in their time slots, you know, in their life, because we're all volunteers. And so uh, yeah, it's, it's made it a lot more convenient for board members who we are volunteers to achieve, and I think it's great that they've done that, so, yeah.
Thank you, and finally.
Yes, I have so many fun updates. At the um Fashion for Compassion event, not only were we, uh did we get to walk the runway, but we had principals, we had teachers, it was so much fun. And then the crowd was full of Blue Springs um uh enthusiasts, so it was really great. And one of the um other uh persons who walked the runway is a radio personality and she was a two thousand and six grad from Blue Springs and she could not stop raving about Blue Springs, which was so much fun to hear about. Speaking of raving about Blue Springs, um I ran into somebody who recently moved his family back to Blue Springs, that they lived out of state. And he said he didn't realize what an anomaly Blue Springs was when he was a student, when he was living it and then seeing his kids in a different district, um and when the opportunity came for a job to come back to this area, he jumped on it and he moved his entire family back here, and I just thought, what a great testament to everybody who makes Blue Springs great. So I just wanted to make sure I shared that, um and then um wanna say uh the Education Foundation did such a great job with the golf tournament, um it was a lot of fun to see um everybody out, either volunteering, golfing, all those good things. And then tomorrow is the last day of summer journey, and so huge thank you to everybody who made summer so much fun for our kiddos. Um I'm really excited about just the new friendships that are forged and um the experiences that they're provided. Um it really takes a lot of parent guilt away from me, I'm like, thank you for making this summer special for my kiddos. And then um uh I'm so excited that the middle school transition day is on Thursday, it's gonna be great, I can't wait to hear all about it. And then um lastly, um I know, um well, I guess I have two more things, Jill kinda touched on this um when she gave her update on all the great services that they're providing, but I just wanna say thank you to this district for your inclusive practices when it comes to um opportunities for our high school age students. With, together with the district and Sean Roderick helped do this, um students with disabilities got to have that experience of having a first summer job either with um supporting the um primetime and summer journey efforts at um chapel as well as at Blue Springs High School with the maintenance team. And those experiences um are life-changing, not only for those kiddos, but for their families, so thank you to that, um to the district for doing that. And then the Parent Square, if you guys are parents, it is so easy and good to use and I'm just so thankful for the work that, and the new websites for each school, that the work that went into that, I know it was really intentional and hard, and I know it's a big lift to make so many websites for all of our schools, plus the district website. So um I just, I'm, I'm really grateful for like all the tools that we have to make this year great, so, thank you.
Well, thanks, uh, I'll be quick, comment will be, see you at convocation tomorrow morning, bright and early. And uh I'm looking forward to the, the exciting buzz of a new school year getting off the ground, so. Anything else, if not, uh I will adjourn our work session and I am going to call to order a special meeting right now for the purpose of going to a closed session, I'll entertain a motion. Moved by Mr. Seams, still have a second, second by Ms. Aggett, that is a roll call vote to go into closed session, we'll start over here, Ms. Emerson? Ms. Cohen, Ms. Seams? Yes by me, seven oh vote to go into closed session. We can, if you want to, in the meeting room.
Dinner's ready.
Dinner's ready, pick that up and then we'll convene over in the executive boardroom.